Yeah, I think it's a D-Day here.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
But yeah, that's.
No.
Yeah, it's not very.
That's cool.
It is, yeah.
Are you excited, nervous?
Yeah.
All of you are.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'm. I think I'm excited, I mean like. Wanted out, and um, my work is in good shape.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not for the one.
Good. Alright.
Two extra weeks than I thought I was gonna have, so I feel good.
Good.
Welcome, right? And. Yeah.
You must be winning the breakfast to be yes that I'm losing it.
That's good.
Would the red line version be where you were?
Yeah.
When we went to the office.
You've talked to a lady about.
Yeah, so.
This sort of holistic process that we have, have you integrated into that yet?
At Sumo, like the whole like dietary, you know.
Yes. Yes.
Dietary, yeah, spoken with a dietitian several times, she has made whole foods plant-based. No white flour, no white rice. And the pizza.
No white rice, rice in there, wow.
Yeah.
My art, one of my good friends, boyfriend's wife was gorgeous dietitian, she was up at Sumo.
Mm-hmm.
And she's pursued that very type of diet for decades.
Yeah.
She has come over the last thirty-six months. Turned out with multiple myelone, which is supposed to be fatal. I played nine holes of golf this time.
Wow.
In her own hair.
Good.
So Kathy would swear by. Now, the only downside was this killed her, wasn't it? John. It was that. Anthony they. Removed blood.
Mm-hmm.
Scrubbed it. She had eaten red meat for iron.
Really?
Oh.
So John was eating some choices. That's stupid.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yes.
He said, it's honest, but I can't stand it, how you go.
Wow.
Yeah.
For women, you know, all the time.
Wow.
Low-fat, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know whether they did buffalo or not, but you know, they were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you figure it out, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as a matter of fact, uh, to sort of celebrate her. She's not treating recovery because she never. Cancer.
Yeah, we end up with a baseball game on Saturday, so it felt like we got a lot accomplished this week, so this weekend. Back out tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean it.
Hey Chuck, how are you?
You know, and starts making better choices that I like.
How's it going?
I think I did, but you know, did this to me. I mean, sort of, but like junk food, like that's one impossible.
Well, yeah.
You know what I mean, like this is not.
No, your order is not working?
No.
We were switched.
It's like being clean and sober.
Right? Yeah, except.
Hi Dad, hi John. Hey Kathy, do you think um.
Really? Kathy was too, Kathy.
What's your plan for the ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm like, I switched to red, I'm like, yeah. You do, like. I think we're in trouble that way, people will.
Oh, it's.
And so.
Thinking about something.
I know the last time we did it, I was like, no, I'm like, that's, that math doesn't make sense. Do you think I have something where we.
When you try to turn Kathy. When she used to.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a glass.
Right?
You can add in ninety-eight percent of stuff.
I want to.
Is it really is?
Right?
Right, come on.
I mean, right, I'll trust me, I'll be like, alright. Not, I wanna, but.
Okay, John?
I, you know, right, I like that one.
Oh, when you.
Oh, yeah.
That's the thing that I, that's almost like. It's just, it's funny, we were talking about, um, we had our situation today the other day.
Are you guys?
Yeah, once you have my experience, my dad, I'd be like, I don't really understand this stuff. I had one, um, I was just trying to, I was like, oh, I'm talking about that, and I couldn't. So. I don't know. Well, yeah, and I don't even know if all of them are bad, again, I was like, oh yeah, you know, I look at them like, you could just have a. Our job, just like the summer tour, church and children's. She's, yeah, Jason. Yeah, and that's all.
I have.
She says she and Jason are.
Well, yeah.
He's your sister, right? He forged the shrubbery.
So I guess my window's busted now.
It's not working, I don't know.
I think your attack is another one. But I will, I can also.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, is that. It was just really dry.
Color fast.
Or some part of this, yeah, like it depends on dairy.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just an.
An on the board.
I don't overdo.
Don't wanna do anything.
I guess we take it. Well, but they will, yeah. I'm sorry, I see it a lot, I don't, I see it a lot already.
That's right.
I mean, you can't tell much. Unmake.
Try and open it safari.
I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't.
Did you have it?
Oh, yeah, the Christmas sandwich, their Christmas sandwich is amazing. So they seem to set up. Oh my gosh, so it was at the group.
Right.
And um, I guess it was Joe and I, and uh. Actually, it's funny, talking to guy who.
Yeah.
You called the audit. Yeah, I talked to him.
Oh, yeah. Then it's important right now.
I was like, yeah. I was starting to be as well, clearly.
Cause he's like, he's the best person to say.
Okay, I can tell.
Well, it's good.
I don't know.
Kinda just followed the flow, followed the.
I think that once a month.
See, when I drive, I just have, feel like people are going crazy.
Mostly, mostly.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah. I've never really seen people, so I don't feel like that's. So I'm.
Just like you're saying, she brought something home that was cooked.
Brought some garbage.
And you. School kids, but I'm not worried about that. That's, that's monitored, but we pay for that. That's why.
Well, it's.
Yeah.
In the future, maybe shoes don't sell complex.
That's exactly.
This way.
Have you ever been to Dylan's and not.
They, I feel like if you put it out camp, it won't have life.
It's, it's a local, local.
What's that?
Like farmer's.
Good, how are you doing? Good.
Yeah.
Okay, glasses.
Try it.
Oh, what a floor. I didn't even pick, I had nothing to do with it, since she works with me, was like, will you take these?
Oh my god, that's so cool.
I mean. Fine, no.
Fine.
There we go.
Look at mine.
Thank you.
That is so cool.
Wouldn't, 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 it's like an invite door. Oh my god, that is the beautest thing now.
Just like.
It's so cool.
Oh my god, I think it's, what's this for?
Wow.
Ew, Hong Kong.
Okay.
When are you gonna go, I'll meet you there next week. Okay. We have for this week, this week. What day? You can go this week.
Use the tech.
Okay. I ended this whole project up. Surgery's fifty. And that's.
Yeah. That's what I was getting at, so you're, the motion is gonna be moved forward.
Yeah.
Assuming it doesn't make. If nobody makes a motion, it's either there.
Yeah. That's what we want, I know, right, go ahead, shake away. He done? I'll bet. That's exactly what it's about. Have we got their roof waxed up? Okay, I'll catch you, you're gonna go.
Whatever you're.
That would be cool. They're fun, they're a lot. Oh, that's awesome.
The voice gods.
Voice gods? Where's Street Thirty-Five?
Um, it's the St. Paul's Parish.
Guys, can you hear it up for Summer Camp?
Yeah.
Will you be doing anything else? Camping watch?
We own a house on Hill, I've been on two weeks. Yeah, that's what, that's what it's.
Intensive.
Yeah.
Separates. Boys.
So fun.
Yeah, I just forgot something.
I can make ramen in the house. That's something I'd like to.
Thanks for that call.
Ramen news.
Uh, night test number three.
How test number one and two though? I guess I have a test.
Pretty good, has tested here right too.
Well, one was the, one with a full meeting that was over there, so.
Yeah, it works great.
Well.
What's supposed to be.
I'm surprised.
Right direction.
I do, how are you? We're all suffering. Patrick, what do you think of that house?
I do.
Did you go to go out? Did you go to the neighbors?
No, I didn't go see the neighbors, but yeah.
I'm surprised they went out.
I spent three seasons playing there and uh, down with.
We take some, sometimes we do like.
That one.
Yes.
And um.
Do you have.
Couple of years.
Do you have.
Just a couple others that we just.
I think it's true.
It's very disappointing that they.
That's. It's great.
It is great.
To the party.
I'm not sure what you said. I'm what?
Like, what's this party you speak of? I know not what she's speaking.
I'm retired. Cabular.
Yeah, yeah, he's. Struggles. Doesn't care.
Although.
I thank you so much. I know.
Accept it and come to call when you're standing. I now call the order, the committee of the whole meeting of June sixth, twenty twenty. Two, sorry. Time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the rule?
Member McLeeser?
Here.
Member Wyatt?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Number Schreit?
Here.
Number Vol?
Here.
Number Matheny?
Here.
And member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, let's start off with uh, economic development, Darren.
Thank you. Uh, we have for consideration this evening, a proposal to expand uh, the hours of our Dora to basically make it a seven-day. Event. This uh, has come to our attention by Councilor Orr, so I'm gonna kick it over to, to John right now. If he wants to add anything to it, then we'll go with a discussion.
Well, currently it's settled from Wednesday to Saturday, I believe, with uh. Or no, until Sunday, Monday and Tuesdays are off, so I just think to be consistent. There are some holidays, I know we're gonna be having a uh, Labor Day fest and stuff of that nature. And for those Monday holidays, I just think it's the right thing to do and it might bring more people to use the door and visit the establishments.
Uh, let me start uh, with Jamie on my far right, co-chair, uh, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, no, my only thoughts are, is this has been a very successful program and I look forward to seeing the days extended, so.
Christine?
Agree, I think it's confusing, but it's not on Mondays and Tuesdays, I don't think people realize that. Um, so make it consistent, happy days. It's a great program.
Stephanie?
Thank you.
Same here.
Yeah?
Just as a point of clarification, we might want to include daily, twelve P M to eleven P M, cause the way it's written, it could be construed as. Starting at noon and going twenty-four hours a day for the whole week and running through Saturday. Or Sunday. Just, I think we need to amend that.
Why don't you try, go ahead and clean up the language a little bit, make sure Ben reflects that. Okay, so on that particular item, um, I hear no objections, again to reiterate Mr. Priest's comments, uh, we have found this to be tremendously successful. We've had, uh, the reports are that the businesses that are participating have experienced a significant increase in revenue. Times when the door is operated. And per the chief of police, we've had no law enforcement issues. So having said that, uh, let me have a motion to place on the agenda for next Monday, a revision in the hours. Pursued to Mr. Priest's request. I'll make that motion, give you a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, part two of this, we have a request. From St. Paul's Catholic Church. To amend the door legislation. To include its parking lot. Before you on the screen is the area that uh, in green is the area in question. Uh, this will allow the door and the church to have activities in that spot. And would facilitate other events as well.
Is that the parking lot behind the chamber?
Yes, yes. And I should note, parenthetically, the chamber has also expressed an interest, as has Howling Bird. So we've got the support of the businesses that are in front of the, on the east side of the parking lot. And the owner of the parking lot has made the request.
And just for clarification, this is St. Paul's that is okay with it and asking for this.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, is there any discussion? To my right?
Yes, sir.
To my left? Um, I'll make a motion that the map be so amended to include the parking lot as designated in the map.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, you find it's pretty. Stephanie?
Uh, this is regarding the rental registration and we have kinda talked about how we're gonna do those rental registrations in the software that's gonna be included. Uh, for those rentals and I was talking to Mr. Diorio today, um, about that, and if you wanna talk a little bit about that and the money that will start this year and then what will be budgeted for the future.
Okay, this is certainly a part of what Gina's uh, appropriation, the funds, and she'll get into more detail on that from her end, but for. Purposes of the rental registration software, we're gonna go with OpenGov. And OpenGov is a provider that we currently use. Uh, in our finance department for our budget. And uh, OpenGov has, uh, you know, a dozen or more model, or modules that can be used by municipalities. Uh, in townships, we spoke into a number of uh. Municipalities that use OpenGov and as a user of it ourselves, uh, we think that this would be uh, the best term. We're gonna go for, right now, just a year and a half term, uh, to coincide with the contract, uh, that we have with, uh, OpenGov and the finance department. So for this year, we have approximately, uh, this would start July first. It gives us six months to get it up and running, it's approximately nine thousand dollars for the software installation. And then the ongoing, um, uh, subscription to this is approximately fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. Uh, competitive with the others that we looked at, uh, and feel that this one gives us the most control over actually writing some of the software, very user-friendly. And uh, we look forward to getting it and moving it rather quickly through implementation, learning, and then uh, with the January one start.
Okay, some of the other appropriation amendments that are listed, um, we are budgeting to try to true up some of the budget since we're nearly halfway through the year. We have the service union contract that we opened early and settled on, so we wanted to make some amendments for that, we have our seasonal hires for our parks department, so we needed to amend the budget for those hours. We have the occupancy grant, um, for Akron Children's Hospital, so we actually reviewed three years and caught them up through the COVID years. And they are going to donate half of that back to us, um, for our parks expansion project, so that was really good news as well. Um, and some of the other things again are just trueing up some of our line items so that going into tax budget season in August, we'll be ready to go. Okay, any other questions? Alright, we'll put that on the agenda. Give a second.
Story of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, um, next we're gonna move on to ordinance and claims, um, I'm gonna make a motion, I, I'm gonna ask for a second, uh, to suspend. Uh, council rule twenty-four and set require a two-thirds majority in order for items five A through five G to be recommended to the council, to be recommended to be added to the council agenda. Um, in accordance with final passage requirements under Ohio law. Um, so basically, we're going to need five votes to move this onto the agenda, so.
Any of the items on the agenda?
Any of them, right, correct. So, John, I'll let you kick it off here.
Well, I'll make that, revolt will make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Well, we have five A, an ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Canaan, a charter amendment for the purposes, for the purpose of altering the terms of office of elected officials of the City of North Canaan. And thereby establish a four-year alternating term beginning on January first. So how I understand it, um, the mayor and the council of our seats would go first. And then the, the four council people would go after that. So if I can have a motion. Oh, uh, do you need that with you?
We'll have a discussion first.
Do we have a discussion on that, or we all?
Good idea.
I think the, the other point is not only are they staggered terms, but we're also moving the term from December one to January one. And per someone to the administration's request, uh, input, uh, that uh. Is much smoother for other kinds of issues.
Well, consistent with what the county does as well.
Yes.
It was confusing.
We were the only one, I think.
Yeah.
Going to December.
And I think that was for budgetary reasons back in the day. Is that a motion, Mr. Orr?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Uh, revolt will second? Okay, um.
Should we do, do we need to do a roll call vote, or should we do a roll call on this one?
Certainly can if you.
Yeah, let's do that, that way it's very clear, so. Ben, could you call the rule?
Member McLeeser?
Yes.
Number Wyatt?
Yes.
Number Warren?
Yes.
Number Schreit?
Yes.
Number Vol?
Yes.
Number Matheny?
Yes.
Number Orr?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Ben.
So five B is an ordinance to submit, uh, to the electors of the City of North Canaan, a charter amendment for the purpose of simplifying the notice requirements imposed on the clerk of counsel for special needs of city council. So maybe you explain to you what you have to go through now and what you wanna go through.
So by charter now, I'm to hand deliver you all notice or post it on your front door. However, if you show up at that special meeting, that is considered you have waived that requirement for notice. Basically, what this would change, and there's another exception in there, this would change it to, there are no exceptions, I must always give you notice, but it doesn't have to be hand delivery or posted on your door. It must still be in writing, but it can be an email or Teams chat or a text message or something to that effect. Uh, member Vol asked me what would happen if we lost all power and internet, um, and in that event, then I guess I would go back to.
Horse and buggy.
Hand delivering it and posting it.
That's gonna be done within twenty-four hours, correct?
Yes, that must be done at least twenty-four hours before the meeting is to occur. That did not change.
And I do have a question, um, so we're moving the requirement for hand delivering, do we need to specify the methods? Um, or just is it one of the above, you mentioned Teams, email, text, phone calls?
So the amendment's currently written, it just says written notice. And at Charter advisory, we did discuss, you know, should we put email or something like that? And we sort of came to the conclusion that. I'm sure that when this was written, hand delivery seemed like the best method. So, you know, we put in email today, forty years from now, is email gonna seem like something?
That's a good point.
Well, you think about the last year and just how many different ways there are to communicate and people thought Zoom worked and then they liked Teams and there's other formats, so I think you leave it there. Written is, we get it. I guess clear.
Okay.
So we kept written so that there must be a record.
Yeah.
I can't just call.
Okay. And if it fails. Then that could be amended charter.
Yeah.
No, I'll make a motion.
Revolt will second?
Uh, Ben, would you call the rule?
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Number Vol?
Yes.
Number Schreit?
Yes.
Number Warren?
Yes.
Member Wyatt?
Yes.
Member McLeeser?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
Five C, an ordinance to submit to the electors. 5C, an ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Gannet charter amendment for the purpose of clarifying the legislative process of the City of North Gannet and establishing a distinct difference, differences between ordinances and resolutions. They talked quite a bit about this. It's quite confusing about what an ordinance is and what a resolution is. Do we really have to separate the two of them because they are completely different? So, any discussion on this?
Is this also the ordinance to have only two readings for every ordinance? And I find that may not give the public enough notice. I'd mind the idea of a single reading for a resolution. But I think that for an ordinance, there needs to be three readings and not two, so I think unless we change that.
Are you in favor?
I thought they were against two readings.
In the final version that made it out of Charter Review, there was just two readings.
Just two readings?
Yeah.
I agree with Dave.
I'm a little, I concur.
I want three readings. Just if I might, I've sat around council tables for many years. I've seen councils change their minds, one or two members at the third reading. They'll give you two. If they want to let it percolate, they'll keep it alive. When the third reading comes, often I find disappointment. I had someone walk away from it. I drink scotch then. But seriously, I think to Dave's point, let's not lose sight of the fact that we are deliberative. We often may not have all of the information that we need at one time. We want to let things steep a little bit and just that third extra reading can give us that.
Or, I'm sorry.
So, I would prefer that we keep three.
I think we've been really responsive too where if we, if we need to move things up, we add a special council meeting.
Yes.
We add something that still lets it percolate, but gives us that third, that third chance.
Yeah, I agree. We have other tools to address it.
Yep.
State law requires three readings.
So, I think, I think what we, before we adopt it, what do we, just in discussion, we want to say a, let's
Well, shouldn't we just vote? We can vote again? Or?
Well, let's, I think we can vote it with the understanding that I'll make a motion that we amend this to read, this is page 20, section 1, 1.
We don't want it to go forward.
Yeah, why would they vote on it?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to amend it, so.
But you, don't you have the other, you have the other issues as well, correct?
Well, we could, so, there's two things. We could, someone could make a motion and if there's not a second, it doesn't move forward, or a second, it could be.
Well, this is, first of all, you're establishing the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. That's part A. But part B is you want to strike
Is that part A?
1, and make sure it says three readings.
I still was confused after reading part A, so I didn't think that it did enough objection that either, but.
This is the one. And Ben, would this be the format as it would appear to people voting?
Yes, so would you have to put the entirety of the old text and the entirety of the new text on the outline? This one in particular would be quite lengthy.
This one scares me that people just stop after this. They're like, I don't even understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, in, in the, in the multiple meetings, that was kind of the, that was, that's what everybody was saying. Because it was very confusing at first going back and forth for that, just.
Yeah.
Can we drop the second half of that and just go with the first of our resolution?
I like the idea of having a resolution where, you know, it's spelled out what it can and cannot be versus what an ordinance is. I think that's very important, that a resolution can be passed in one reading and that's what it's used for. And just change the ordinance to be in three readings. I get it, there's a lot in here, but we're spelling out the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. And we're only changing the fact that a resolution requires one vote, but it doesn't, it's not spending money, it's not finding anything specific. It is simply a resolution.
Expression. I guess, I feel like we talk about it a lot, Gina. I feel like you continually say what a resolution is versus an ordinance. I don't know that writing there is going to change anything.
It establishes.
And it's a lot of time.
I think it establishes in our charter, which is quoted.
Yeah.
And then it sets it aside and then the ordinance being in three votes, so the public can attend, will make their voices then.
But we have three votes.
We do now. We don't have the distinction. We have three votes for a resolution.
Correct?
Nope.
Unfortunately, we must have three votes for a res- for a suspended resolution.
For suspended votes.
Right.
Which is an extra action, which is by emergency and clarifying your ordinance and resolution is the best move in the future.
Another change note is that this amendment would make resolutions no longer subject to mayoral veto. And that's part of the reason for explicitly limiting what they can be used for is that they should only be used for expressions of council's will.
Yeah.
Things that the mayor doesn't have discretion over, so just who you appoint to the civil service commission. Whether or not you say yes or no to a union contract once the mayor's administration negotiates.
Pursuant to Mr. Matheny's comment, I'm going to make a motion that we amend this proposed resolution for 2022 Day 3. And section 1, 1, we strike two different reading, or two different, and replace that with three different. Preserving yet, but also to clarify matter of resolutions. Per the discussion.
Second. Okay, Ben, could we have a roll call vote?
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Member Schreier?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Motion to amend, carry.
I'll make a motion to move this to council meeting.
Revolt will second. Ben, could you call the roll?
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Schreier?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
John?
5D, an ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Gannet charter amendment for the purpose of eliminating the requirement that legislation be published in a newspaper. We talked about that and how the timing of the newspaper R, there's just much better ways to get the communication out to folks through a website, blogs, different communications of that nature. And plus.
Saves us more.
It saves us a lot of work. Very expensive.
Discussion on this? Make a motion. It's on?
Second.
Ben, would you call the roll?
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Member Schreier?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Athene?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
Thank you, Ben. John?
5E, an ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Gannet amendment for the purpose of eliminating the budget deadlines of May 15th for revenues and June 15th for expenses. So, we've heard about the difficulties it is to obtain these and it's a lot better changing this. I think our finance director would agree on this.
Absolutely. We'll still continue to follow the county budget, you know, the alternative budget deadlines and then into our normal budget timeline starting in October, November.
So, starting in, can you speak up?
October.
Any other discussions on this?
So, I was, I was wondering if we're creating voter confusion a little bit by eliminating those dates and not spelling out a future date for when the actual budget's going to be done?
I believe that these were in place when it was, we're changing the council and their elections to be from December to January. So now we're back to a normal calendar year and that was, as also our fiscal year, so we'll be back on the regular deadlines for budgets.
Right. In this, it states those dates, but it doesn't put a date in place then. So, as Ben had mentioned, as the voters reading through this, they're going to see votes, dates disappear with no date replacing it. I'm wondering if it's going to create confusion that they're like, well, what is taking place and when is it due?
The budget needs to be adopted prior to January 1 every year. Or we can't pay any bills or collect any money, so the normal budget deadlines. And then the county auditor, of course, requests the alternative tax budget.
I have absolutely no doubt and complete faith that you are taking care of all those dates. It's merely the voters' confusion that I was concerned about, looking at it from the outside again. That's all. And if nobody else sees that, then I'm fine.
I mean, that's a good point, David. It is, I mean, to us that no discount the calendar. It's not confusing, but to the typical voter, maybe we might want to look into spelling that out.
Just for longer you make it unless they're going to read.
It's true too.
Yes, sir.
I mean, just going to wait to even remove the date?
Just, just a quick, quick question. I'm looking at the, at the nailing language here. Could we could we simply insert a phrase for the adoption of a budget by January 1? Would that work?
It's innate in the, in the process, but yes, I mean, you certainly can spell it out.
So, this takes care of?
These, these dates were the exception to all other budget deadlines. So, we just thought the Charter Review Committee or Advisory Board just wanted to remove them.
Take it out, but to signal to the voters, you got to have a budget by January 1, even though the state requires it and everything.
I like the January 1 and remove the May 15th and June 15th, right? But they just, it doesn't matter to them. And like you said, it's innate in there, so these are just what it was. It is just going to confuse them. They aren't necessary for the ordinance.
Can you, would you do something up for January 1?
With, there are two sections of the charter being amended here. Which one would you like to put in?
So, maybe it would be in the second one where the verbiage changed to the May 15th of each year shall assist the mayor in preparation of the budget. Instead of just saying shall assist the mayor in preparation of the budget, shall assist the mayor in preparation of the budget for January 1st deadline. That tells the voters looking at it and voting on it that the budget will be in place by January 1st. Should we think about this and discuss it? You got to tell me.
There will be a time issue when you come back from break. So, um, so we have we have three meetings before now and break, so.
That's several.
None. These, I do not believe it can be passed under suspension, so we would need if something does not move forward tonight, we would need a special meeting to get it done before break.
With five out of seven votes?
With five out of seven.
Missing one person. Are we okay with this, that change?
Gina? Your thoughts?
If you want to change both of them until January 1, the presentation begins in August and then October. There's a process in place.
Right.
So, if you want to clarify that the budget has to be presented and approved by January 1, that's absolute.
Let's do that.
Both.
Okay, so that's the amendment. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ben, would you call the roll?
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Schreier?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
5F.
I'll make a motion.
I think we're getting that, yeah.
That we move this to the council meeting as amended.
Story of seconds. Ben, would you call the roll?
Start in the middle this time. Member Schreier?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
Thank you, Ben. John, 5F.
5F, an ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Gannet charter amendment for the purpose of altering a standard for potential removal of elected official home office from three consecutive meetings to five meetings in a calendar year. We've talked a little bit about this and some has to be said, I think, in this, an excused absence, have we defined what an excused absence is and what a non-excused absence?
No.
It gets tricky.
You know, this is one thing that I think we really have to define. And if someone's missing because of health reasons or something of that nature, they might have to, you know. I think we should maybe, I would be in favor of taking this off for you.
I really don't see much of a difference between three consecutive meetings and five meetings in a calendar year.
And whether we consider a meeting?
Well, yeah. Well, and then you go down the rabbit hole of trying to define an excused absence and, and politics involved in that. I, I don't like it.
Yeah.
And it's a legal nightmare.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's a legal nightmare.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we haven't really had problems with people having unexcused. People have work issues, they have family issues, they have vacations. There really isn't much more that people are taking off for, you know, family items, all which, I've never been on council for 10 years, but someone said, not excused, so.
Yeah, and who would be enforcing that? Would that be the president of council?
Patrick would come to our door, I think.
Don't want to go, just don't want to go. I, we just don't, we're going to
Yeah.
I think approaches.
I think we have council people that are very responsible. So.
It's not appear to be a motion.
Yes, if there's not a motion, is there a motion on the table?
There is not. Okay. Can we go to 5G?
Go on to 5G.
5G. An ordinance to submit
I'm going to probably move on to, you could state for the Charter Review. Result of the lack of.
Okay, yeah. For 5F, there was no motion on the table and therefore it is not going to move forward.
The idea is you lack of.
All right, 5G. An ordinance to submit to the electors of the City of North Gannet charter amendment for the purpose of permitting council to call charter review commissions more frequently than every 10 years. So, it's nice that we're able, if we need it in a year, we might need it in three years, you know, it's nice that we can call that committee back.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think if nothing for the past two years has shown us that business is entirely different and so we need that flexibility to be able to ask those questions to our constituents. Didn't we just do this, though? Like, how did we, it hasn't been 10 years since our last one, has it?
2018.
2017.
Every year ending in 17.
2017.
So, how did we just do this one?
Well, we can. It's a great question.
Sorry. I don't understand.
The charter prescribes, the charter prescribes a ten-year cycle charter review commission comprised of sixteen citizens?
Fifteen.
Fifteen citizens. It's method one. Method two is the council can by its own initiative propose to the voters changes in the charter. Just do it through the committee process. Let's run that. What we have here with John and Ben is that we had sort of a hybrid. We had parts of our professional team, and then we had a group of citizens that vetted these decisions and discussed them. That's how we arrived here. So what we had is a much smaller group. You should note that, excuse me, one of its distinctions is that no members of council or city officials may be part of the charter review commission. All right, it's truly citizen-driven. This was a hybrid based upon the need to modernize, make more efficient our operation.
So the power being exercised is council's power to submit.
That is correct.
Last year when we were drafting this, then member Shroya and then vice president Rovol, who were the lead people driving the drafting, that made it very clear they wanted citizen participation. So that's where the
Okay.
sort of small vetting committee came in and was created to advise council because council wanted to make sure there was direct citizen.
Okay. So this just gives us permission to call for a school, we just did minus administration and council involvement?
And more citizens. Or also.
Fifty, fifteen.
It's a hybrid.
Now, let's say this, this charter committee was, is being dismissed in July, correct?
Correct, will cease to exist July first.
So when, when they were assigned, it was just a temporary position. So let's say we wanna have the committee come and revisit some things. How do we go about doing this?
By vote.
Would it be a hybrid or fifteen or sixteen citizens?
Your commission, the charter, it's pretty clear about what, how your commission is to be, what compromises your commission. Again, that commission of fifteen will consist of citizens only. And the charter specifically prohibits members of the administration, council staff, et cetera, from participating in those deliberations. And then the next step of the process would be that commission would make recommendations to the council. The council would then debate those and decide by vote whether to place them on the ballot. So the commission is not, does not have absolute authority. There still, still needs to move through the legislative process.
When would we pick these fifteen or sixteen people? If we wanted, if the council, we'd have to get the commission picked first, then.
I think you, you'd probably have an enabling vote to say, "We wanna do this and we're gonna authorize the creation of the commission." Then you would set up as, as, as we did earlier, then you'd set up a set of dates for the, um, it's beginning of the deliberations and discussion, and then you'd have a terminal date. It has to have, you know, you might give them whatever the charter says.
From normal seven year, they are called together in January, I believe, or half until May.
Yeah.
Four.
All right, just room for conversation. Trying to find fifteen or sixteen might be.
Exactly.
You know.
You know.
You've had great success and not so great success.
Right.
I think, again, it, it underscores the importance that we, and I think we all appreciate this. Charter of the city of North Canada granted, it, it's granted by the citizens.
Right.
And ultimate political authority rests with citizens.
Well, any other discussion on this? Make a motion. Push it through.
Second.
Ben, did you call the roll?
Member Wierig?
Yes.
Member Wierig?
Yes.
Member McLeister?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Rovol?
Yes.
Member Shroya?
Yes.
Seven in favor, motion carries?
Thank you, Ben.
I believe I'm sure.
Moving on to water, sewer, and rubbish, Jamie?
How about the works on Saturday?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped David. Moving on to David. Person on safety, David.
Talking about vacations.
All right. Give me a second to pull this back up and help you get. So the administration has put together an excellent list of changing the accrual of vacation time. So instead of vacations being given out on January first, all employees based on years of service, it's going to go to an accrual basis that will allow it to accrue as they work throughout the year. So if I can pull up that page. It shows that, um, on a bi-weekly basis, as they get paid, there are a number of hours that they qualify for vacation with an accrual. It actually works out better for the employee. It's more consistent with those groups that have or under contract, negotiated contract. And it makes it easier, I believe, for our finance team to keep track of the vacation time as it accrues. It sets up that the maximum amount that they can approve is two years, or two years' worth of vacation time that they can carry over, and then it's paid out on a quarterly basis after that. That allows them to keep vacation in a bank, but at the same time, it limits the amount that they can keep based on years of service. And then the other thing, which is probably the greatest benefit for our employees, is allowing them to schedule vacation time in fifteen-minute increments. They may not need a full four hours or a full day or a half a day, that type of thing. This allows them the flexibility to, to be there if their family needs them for just fifteen minutes, or if they have a doctor's appointment, they only need an hour instead of scheduling for full times or full days or partial days, which also helps the department managers and their staffing. So that's kind of a broad overview, and Mr. Diorio might be able to add a little bit more to that. I think it's gonna benefit all the employees in the city, you know, in the areas.
I think all that I would add is to augment, one of your points is that our intent is to have this in place in all collective bargaining agreements, so that it's uniformly applied to all employees throughout the city. So we started that process, uh, and there's another contract up here that we're gonna start on shortly for the water treatment plant operators. And I think once we get those done, we'll be putting together memorandums of understanding with the other bargaining units to get them all in place by January one.
Now, we eliminated that old term, use it or lose it. They, they, if they don't use it, it's then paid out.
Correct.
So.
So I did have one question on how this works as we're going through this. So if somebody's in a holiday week, is overtime paid at eight, over eight hours, or is overtime paid over forty? And is there any way in this process that they can schedule vacation time and actually qualify for overtime in the same week that they're taking vacation time? Please, help me get.
Please.
Remember, this is the exempt ordinance.
Correct, and, and across the contracts, though, they are, the contracts are different.
The con, yes, but this is specifically.
For the, except a vacation day may not be used or charged on a holiday. You cannot get both. If they are called into work, then it is overtime.
Okay, that helps. And then the only other question I had is the, the pay for the vacation that is carried over for two years is paid at current rate and the reason why it's not paid at the rate that it was earned?
When it's paid out, it's paid at current rate. We have never gone back. Is it a life or a phifeo? Do you use last in, first out, first in? So when it is used or when it is paid, it's at that rate, their rate at that time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thoughts, comments, or concerns? Mr. Rovol?
Do you need a motion to move this forward?
We do.
Revol will move? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Moving on to water, sewer, and rubbish, Jamie?
All right, now it's. All right, well, I think we all are aware of what we saw here just a couple of weeks ago on Saturday the fourteenth as far as that abnormal amounts of rain and kind of where that put us. And so I think we, as a council, we're all looking for any sort of an update or information that the administrative, the administrative team is able to share with us. So at this point, I'm gonna pass things off to Mr. Buer.
Thank you, Mr. McLeister. So we're gonna do a little slideshow that is very, very brief. You can understand exactly how succinct and direct of this approach is. So my approach as the administrator and looking at a number of things that, that we have had to tackle. And I do appreciate that everybody who came forward and continues to come forward to this day with the information that helps us get a handle on it. You know, I understand the frustration for many in this regard in that for a long time, there was a period of, of even no action, no communication from the city as to what to do about various problems. That's not me. So I've adopted this approach that's, you know, largely in many places throughout the private sector. And it has served me well in the five years that I've been administrator. So I thought it'd be good to just share with council how I go about tackling something of this magnitude. So, uh, this is gonna be an acronym, D I R E. It's actually pretty spot-on, dire. So in this case, with the flooding, it's very dire circumstances. So what does the D stand for? Diagnose the problem. That actually means getting out, talking to people, you coming up here and talking to us, but, you know, myself, the mayor, my administrative team, we have been to all of the sites. And new sites that keep coming in, go out to. I spent every day going out to sites to talk to people, to walk the site, to get an understanding of what is going on, to diagnose what is the problem. And many times in the past, I think that that was just never done. Nobody went out. Fell through the cracks, whatever, whatever the excuses were. That's not the case here. So we will be in contact and we'll be out to see every single site and to diagnose what is the problem. After you diagnose it, you have to initiate a response. So I'm not sure if this is where the city may have failed in the past either, in that they didn't do anything. So we've already started the initiation of response. So I put together a phone call that's about to come in. If that's the president, let him know, I'll get back to him. You know, but we've, we've put together an internal team that is meeting weekly on this issue. We've already met twice. We're gonna meet every week for the next four months to see how much we can get through. And we'll keep meeting beyond that to handle the new, any new complaints that come in over the summer. So on regards to, say, for instance, on Democracy Circle, I can report that we diagnosed a problem and we initiated this response. We felt that the streets there had insufficient wet basins, there are presently two. So we're increasing that to five. And that work is beginning as we speak. So we think that this would be a great help in most rain events. Will it resolve a super rain event? We'll see. But if we keep this approach for whoever occupies this chair after I go, you should always be able to stay on top of it as we get to the next thing. So in addition to holding on to the initiate response, on Fifth Street Northwest, we've taken the approach that to remedy that problem there quicker, we've gone to outside contracting and to get that done rather than wait on internal crews. We only have so many people that we can dispatch. They have other responsibilities, so we didn't want that to wait. So that's going on. The third thing that we've initiated a response on is in the Ninth and Tenth Street Northwest area. We will be conducting in the next few weeks ahead, smoke tests. We've placed the order for the materials that are gonna be delivered to us soon, shortly, I should say. And then we will initiate at the appropriate weather time. And this will help us to determine if any storm discharge is being directly connected to our sanitary lines. So that will reveal to us where we may have some issues that we need to get resolved. We've also, in some instances, have reached out to stark soil and water for clarification on natural waterways, whose responsibility it is for restoration of, of natural waterways. And we've also reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers and asked for their assistance to come in as it relates to natural waterways. So it's a separate, so part of this process in diagnosing the problem has been to separate this out into different categories. You know, not everybody's issue is the same issue, but there are multiple instances of things in different categories and being able to deal with that and get a hold of the appropriate authorities. And so we will be communicating to, uh, for instance, the Sanctuary Homeowners Association that as it relates to the West Branch of the Nimitishoum Creek that runs through the sanctuary that pursuant to determination for stark soil and water, that is the responsibility of the Homeowners Association for restoration of that water. So that was initiate response. So we, we've started that process. The next one, the R, is to resolve the issue. Seems common sense, but often I found in government that that doesn't always work. The purpose of doing something is to resolve the issue. And if that didn't work, then it needs to go back to diagnose the problem, initiate response, resolve the issue. You know, just, you know, walk away from it, so to speak. So we are working on those, and as these things happen, we'll know whether or not we've been able to resolve these issues. Some of the things that will get in place, we won't know until the next rain event, whether the issue has been resolved or not. But we will keep a catalog of this. And we have been, you know, mapping, as you know, at the previous council meeting, where these things occur. And we will be building a database of information that will help future councils and future administrations look back at this. I can tell you that in my going out to meet with individuals and individuals that have lived here for decades and hearing from them directly the stories of things that have been done in the past, I can tell you that we lose a lot of institutional knowledge from our employees. And it really hasn't been a very good effort, in my opinion, over the decades to capture that information. And that goes back to, just, I'm missing for just a second. We talk about the line of succession in each of the departments. And it's getting some structure in place where, when number one goes. And it's getting some structure in place where when number one goes, number two's been there for a while and understands that, and then they move maybe to number one, and somebody else in the ranking file moves up. And we have a way of retaining that knowledge for as long as possible. So, I learned a lot about the city and some of the things that have been done in the past that we wouldn't have been able to ascertain just from looking at a record. Next, evaluate the solution. So, even if we do something and it was successful, we need to have an evaluation of whether or not it was effective, if it was cost efficient, is there a better way that we could have handled it? And implement that and roll that out into the next grouping that we're working on. So, it's never just to, you know, the old Ronnie Phil said it, forget it. That's, you know, may have been the approach in the past, but that is not the approach For instance, then, we've began work on the sanitary line, as you know, on the Tenth Street Northeast Street corridor. And we believe through engineering and whatnot in the past, that this Tenth Street Northeast sanitary improvement, by putting a whole brand-new line in there that's completely watertight, waterproof, not collapsed, or anything wrong with it for a vast stretch of feet, three, four hundred feet, that it's going to improve the sanitary situation on the near northeast side, Tenth Street, Paul Road, we have a lift station there. And we should be monitoring then, you know, how often that lift station runs. And if it runs too much, that means that there's something not right and that we should do something about it. So, that will, we will be monitoring that once this project is complete. As another means of things that we don't often get talked about, of processes that we incorporate into basic projects. So, the Seventh Street Northeast repaving, prior to the repaving, we rebuilt all the catch bases. So, you know, it may not have, could have opted not to, but it wouldn't have been the prudent thing to do, meaning that if we were going to pave that road, let's do it right and replace them also that we don't have that problem. And there were many that were in need of repair. I mean, they are concrete and they do, they do wear out. So, that is the approach that we take. It's the dire approach. We diagnose the problem, initiate a response, resolve the issue, evaluate the solution. And we do it over and over and over and over again until it's, until it's resolved. I tend to, every week, come back at our council meeting, whether it's through committee or through regular reports, to give an update as to what we've done during the week, what we've looked at, and keep it going throughout the rest of the year. Questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Jake, anything else?
No, unless there's any questions for Mr. Diorio. I don't think I have anything further. And thank you for the update.
All right, moving on to, so I wanted to bring up the rules of council again. With five incoming members, I wanted to give people a chance. And, you know, every once in a while, I want to bring this up to discuss the rules. So, this is an open discussion. If you guys want to address any of the rules, they're attached in the packet. This is your opportunity to weigh in.
Is there something you wanted to focus on in particular, or?
I have a couple of notes. But I want to start, it is open, and see if anybody wants to weigh in. You know, every once in a while, we have a thought that comes about, and we haven't changed any, so this is our opportunity to do that.
I know. We had one meeting, and it was regarding recognition, I guess, of the public, and then us having conversations with them back and forth. And I think that does get confusing at times because they all say, you know, something, and maybe, I think this one was someone from the Realtor Association, and it was just confusing because you wanted to ask a question at that moment. So, maybe that's something. And I think at Rule 38, it says there should be no debate, but we know that that might be, we're conversing. And maybe, on that point, and maybe you would know this, could we, at that point, motion to allow a debate to occur or allow questions to be answered? Is that, is that what we would do? Okay.
Under recognition visitors, there are really two, two kinds of visitors that we have who stand before us. The first would be what I would consider your citizen, who's here to comment on an item or his or her choosing, open mic, plenty. The second would be an expert that we've invited to come in for the purpose of having a dialogue with council. So, you know, there are two. I think you would, may want to make sure you differentiate between item A and item B. I think the other element is that there are some, some statements made that at the podium that are so egregious that they demand an instant response. They simply can't stand. And I say that because the Ohio Supreme Court, for example, recognizes, has a set of rules for attorneys. And that attorneys, when they appear before city council, are to conduct themselves according to the highest ethical standards. We have our rules. And I would argue that there have been instances when we've had speakers who have not conducted themselves to the highest ethical standards. Granted, they're not attorneys.
Well, and I remember one time you, you responded, and I think that you had asked council president, would it be okay if I, if I respond immediately?
Thirty-nine. That's, so that's addressed in thirty-nine. We're okay on that.
Yeah. Well, in thirty-two, when you talk about the different things that, you know, in engaging in violent, threatening behavior, offensive language, defamatory or slanderous, insulting or attempting to provoke another person. I think the past council presidents have been pretty good about that. And Chief Kemp is now in our presence and has really made it a point to be here so that if we have to remove people, we do. So, that's good.
If we go back to those Realtor, the Realtor who spoke, she was not invited.
Right.
By the council.
Correct.
Correct.
That's, that's correct, John. I would, I'm glad you raised that because that Realtor was here in a professional capacity. She was not a citizen.
Right.
And I hold that, I hold the representative of a professional organization who appears to, appears to influence legislation to the same standard that I hold an attorney. I expect that individual to be prepared, to be truthful. And I'm not suggesting that she was not truthful, it's just that her comments were incomplete. And for an individual to helicopter in to a meeting when we're voting without having touch base with the administration, the council president, and ask us simply to delay, I think is inappropriate. It's not comport to a high standard of conduct, professional conduct, in my view. It's only my view. I don't expect anybody else to share that.
Do we need to change the rules that we have put up on the screen?
What would you add?
Yeah. I don't know. That professional conduct, I don't know.
Yeah, but I think professional conduct would be limited to interpretation.
Yeah. The rules were pretty clear.
I think so, Joe.
And we did change them recently. And not, you now state them, and they're up there and...
I mean, frankly, I don't think we've had an issue with those rules, at least in the short few months that the four of us new people have been on.
You know, we all miss things with the world. Couple of council meetings before I called for a point of order wasn't accepted. You know, we all make mistakes. But I think we, we're learning, the four of us, and I appreciate the opportunity we're having now to learn and watch.
Yeah, I mean, I've read through them again to see if there's anything we need to expand upon. I would say the only thing that I would say, if, if we have a speaker that wants to speak more than five minutes, how do we take care of that? Because it's, it's not addressed in our rules. So, let's say, Acme, when they were speaking, we just...
Multiple representatives.
Right, right. But, you know, they were in, making their point, whatever. So, let's say if it's another similar circumstance where we want to hear more of what they're saying.
I'd give it to...
Here's, here's what I would recommend.
Yeah.
If it appears that speaker's comments have merit, they are not counted. I would leave the discretion of the council president.
Okay.
Or if you want to call a vote to allow a couple more minutes, I think that would be appropriate. What you don't want is a long-winded speech that really becomes redundant.
Sure.
You know, and I, and I think the other thing is this, too, is that on the issues that we're talking about, every speaker at that podium that I can think of that might fit into that category has an opportunity.
Call us.
To meet with a member of council, meet with the administration. And frankly, that is probably a better approach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Than a gunfight at the podium.
Sure.
Give you a perfect example. Let's go back to the Realtors representative. Asked us to delay, provided no specific information, and then met with the administration two days later, if nothing came needed. The point was that an additional time period was not allowed.
I think five minutes is plenty. I think in most conversations, and if you're at a board meeting or if you're speaking, it'll lose interest after two to three minutes. And we have a healthy public speaks allotment. In Kitten City, you have three minutes. In other entities, you have that amount of time, and it is very focused on what is there. And really, they can come up to any of us afterwards, we all are sitting here, they can talk to us then, they can talk to us before. And, you know, I didn't hear from, from the Acme individuals before the meeting.
Or after I gave them both my cards.
Yeah. We were all here. So, I, I would say, I think it's very subjective. And then I think you have other people that say, will you let them speak? Why didn't I get to speak? And it becomes this war, that we don't need a battle. I think five minutes is sufficient.
I think you're right.
The only other one that has been discussed previously has been name and address. Do we want to continue to make people wait for a name? And if so, should it be residential address? Because I know a lot of times people are saying, I'm from twenty-five, Bill and Village. I know they don't live on Bill and Village Avenue, it's, it's where their, their company is.
I'm fine with either. I think if, if it was the Acme individuals, it made sense. And I don't remember what they, but I think they actually said.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever their businesses is, or their, or their, where they're a citizen. I don't care.
What's everybody else's? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this?
Matt, I'm glad you brought those up. I think you're ready to bring it to the forefront.
Sort of a quick review.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to give an opportunity to...
In other scenarios, is public speaks always one of the first things for the meeting or the end of the meeting?
For what?
Public speaks.
For the order, are you talking about?
Yeah, is it usually in the first part of the meeting or is it at the end?
Yeah, it's, it's almost always at the, at the, after the prayer.
For somebody to sit.
No.
I've seen it, I've seen it either at the beginning or some other entities split it up. If you're talking about something on the agenda or at the beginning of the meeting, you're talking about something you're not, you gotta get it in.
I may thank you guys all for coming. Stand, appreciate it.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Revolt will move adjourned. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sure.
Patrick, do you have a minute?